Ashley, okay, we are good.
We are calling this meeting to order. May we have the roll call?
Stu- oh sorry, trustee Gaines?
Here.
Trustee Reeves?
Here.
Trustee Buffalo? Trustee Adams?
Here.
Trustee Harvey?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Public comments for closed session 3.1, do we have anything? Okay, we are adjourning to closed session.
We're convening, reconvening back to public session. Attendants?
Students trustee Rivera.
Here.
Trustee Gaines.
Here.
Trustee Reeves.
Here.
Trustee Buffalo.
Here.
Trustee Adams.
Here.
Trustee Harvey.
Here.
We have a quorum.
We'll now have our pledge of allegiance. Mr. Adams, will you lead us?
Thank you. Will you all please rise, face the flag, place your hand over your heart, and recite with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
We do not want to forget that nine eleven is Patriot Day. So we are now to approval of the meeting agenda. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion. Vote.
Student trustee Rivera.
I approve.
Trustee Gaines.
I approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yay.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Report of closed session action. There was a motion made by Michael Adams, second by Mr. Steve Buffalo, with a four-one vote. With a four-one vote, the board denied the letter of reprimand for employee number, I'm sorry, denied the appeal for employee number twenty-two dash twenty-three slash E dash zero-zero-five. Michelle Harvey, yes. Michael Adams, yes. Steve Buffalo, yes. Barbara Gaines, yes. Michael Reeves, no. That is the report from closed session. We are now to public comments, ten point two. Pursuant to Board Policy Number twenty-three fifty, public comment may be limited to three minutes per person. All speakers who would like to comment regarding a matter on the agenda must submit a public comment card to the Board President or the Recording Secretary before the point in the meeting at which the agenda item is called. Public comment cards are available at the information table in the middle of the theater from the Recording Secretary or online. So our first comment card is for Mr. Eugene Hernandez.
I would like to say that I'm very disappointed with President Zellet. I understand she's the only one who can invite speakers to come to the campus. And I don't know why she thought that inviting the Chicano astronaut to come and speak, I guess on behalf of the Chicano community, was a good idea. I have yet to hear one person in the whole community say we're proud of this Chicano astronaut. Instead of inviting a speaker such as Delores Huerta from the United Farm Workers, who is a hero in the Chicano community, or seeking out other Chicano leaders to speak, I think that that is very deficient on behalf of Dr. Zellet. On the other point, I think that it's important for this college community to understand that right now we're witnessing the greatest Holocaust of human lives since World War Two. What's going on in West Bank, in Gaza, a hundred and sixty-eight thousand people have lost their lives, mostly women and children. Forty thousand children are without their limbs due to the bombing going on by our administration, by Israel, against the Palestinian people. I think it would be important for this college to invite a speaker such as Dr. Cornell West from Harvard to come and speak, or Dr. Jill Stein from the Green Party to speak about peace to the students here in this campus. There are children, there are parents who go around the West Bank and Gaza picking up their children in a garbage bag, because that's all that's left from the bombing that's going on by Israel. And plus, there's a disease going down from the lack of sanitation, lack of water, and lack of resources for the Palestinian people. It would behoove this campus to have a Palestinian speaker speak about what's going on so everyone knows that this administration is just funding a genocide. And I would ask Dr. Zellet to invite someone to speak on that behalf to the campus. Thank you.
Our next public comment card is Jason Bowen, ABCFT.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Board. I appreciate this opportunity to speak with you briefly here for three minutes. First, I just want to say I'm disappointed with the vote. Essentially, what you approved was that it's okay to deny due process rights. Now, the police do not have the authority to come into my home unless there's probable cause or they have a search warrant. If I'm arrested, then I must be read my Miranda rights. So there are rights that we have that protect us from abuse. Now, with that said, I believe the administration is not responsible with the authority they have, especially with regards to discipline. We have a faculty member who is disciplined in the most severe manner possible. And yet, any reasonable person who looked at the charges, even assuming guilt, which we don't believe there's even any guilt, but even assuming guilt, none of that behavior warrants such disproportionate action taken against them. Now, what I learned this morning, and I'm trying to take a different tack. So this morning I learned that President Zellet and her administration, they have contact with the Board continuously, supposedly, meaning that she has your ear. What I have failed to do was take advantage of opportunities such as Mr. Buffalo actually invited me to have coffee and stated that I could always contact him if I want to have coffee. So I think what I need to do going forward, and what I'm going to do, is contact each of you, starting with Mr. Buffalo. And I'm going to ask if we can meet for coffee so that I can share the faculty perspective on matters and so that I can also hear your perspective on matters, and perhaps I can learn a little more. But the hope I have is that we can bridge this gap between us, which I take some responsibility for. But this ultimately is to build a college community that we're all proud of, where there's respect, respect for dignity, respect for law and order, respect for the contract, which there has been, that has been lacking. And I think it's been clear that it's been lacking. So with that, Mr. Buffalo, I will be in contact with you soon. I'm looking forward to that cup of coffee.
Next we have, and please forgive me if I mispronounce, it looks like Ariadna.
Wow, I'm too short for this. Oh, I can, okay, great. Hi, good evening, Board of Trustees and President Zellet. My name is Aria Vedana, and I am a student worker here at ABC. I work for Professor North in the Arts and Humanities Department, specifically for film and television. I am watching as my friends are being impacted by a serious issue that's happening on campus, which we were told, shockingly late, that apparently there is no money left for any more student workers on campus. That federal work-study money dried up, student equity's budget was cut in half, which would normally help catch and provide a safety net for those student workers who weren't, either couldn't qualify for federal work-study, or after the funds dried up, that money from student equity would go to those student workers. Now, multiple departments on campus are being affected. Film, theater, photography, the entire Arts and Humanities Department, math, and there are more that I'm possibly not aware of. My friends are the kindest, warmest souls on the planet, and now they are no longer being able to be paid because of this issue. And even though they have filled out the correct paperwork, were offered jobs, and were ready and prepared to work for this campus, they were told they can no longer be paid, which was only told to us in the first two weeks of the fall semester. Why wasn't this issue brought to us in the summer? Student workers are the backbone of this campus, and I am now seeing the film and art departments suffer because of this. Where the cages, the equipment cages that normally rent out equipment to our students used to be staffed, they no longer are, because no one's able to work them. Students are trying to check out equipment for weeks now and are unable to, unless it's when Norris, our equipment tech, is there, and he's unable to be there at consistent times. I'm watching my boss, Professor North, trying to find funding and stressing over this issue, and now having to do more excess work because of this. I am a faithful student worker for three semesters now, and I truly love my job. And I am now at a loss in how I can help my friends who are going through this. We cannot expect anyone to do these labor-intensive tasks for free, and I'm curious to why this even happened, why there's a mismanagement of funds, and why the budget was cut in the first place. And why were these decisions not told to us in advance so that hopefully something could be done before the semester started? I'm watching my friends who are struggling and who are scrambling now for jobs because they were promised, but now need to find jobs elsewhere. Struggling because of chains of miscommunications and misguided funds, which again, was not told to us. I plead with the Board to resolve this issue and to give us details on who made this decision, why this decision was made, and when it was made. Thank you.
Thank you. I now have Anthony Valzeran. I'm sorry, Anthony, if I mispronounced your last name.
That starts with a B?
Yes.
Oh, it's Belian, yeah, no worries.
Okay.
So, I'm here to talk about the same thing Aria just did, about the shortage of student workers. From what I hear, there, a lot of the faculty on staff isn't really aware of this situation, unfortunately. But this is affecting mainly the Arts and Humanities Department, but I hear it's also affecting STEM and equipment rooms and labs that can't be managed properly because there is a shortage. A lot of the faculty here relies on student workers to maintain these things. And I also work for Professor North, and I do know that he made a lot of decisions regarding the Film Department during the spring semester with the belief that he'd have more student workers now working in the fall. And a lot of these student workers showed up in the fall, and now they can't get paid. And they thought they could. So, well, I'd just like to see this looked into and for something to be done about it. If there could be some kind of revenue stream to pay these student workers, because I do think they're a really important part of maintaining the infrastructure of the school. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. We now have Max Mendoza.
Good evening. I'm talking about the same thing that Aria and Anthony have talked about. I'm just going to bring attention to my personal experience as I was one of the student workers that was promised a job this semester. I was Professor North's student worker in the spring semester, and we both were fully planning on me to come back in the fall. I've done all the paperwork and things that I've had to do beforehand. And it was only when I came back to school that we both found out that there wasn't any funding for student workers. We called people from job placements and different people that he thought would be in the know of this, and only to find no real answers. So, he's just been trying to find out sources to, for, to fund me. And he hasn't yet, but he's been working hard. I just think it's important to look into this because I know it's happened to other student workers as well. There's been a lot of confusion about, around it, too. At first, they were telling me it was because I didn't qualify for FAFSA. But then, we soon found out there were other student workers that did qualify, and, but they were also just not approved because they just didn't have enough money to fund these student workers that were promised jobs. So, I just think it's important to look into this for, not just me, but all the other student workers that weren't able to get jobs in other departments as well.
Thank you so much. We have one more speaker, and I'm going to ask when that speaker finishes. Let you all stand there so I can address you together, okay? We have, I think this is QB Maria Estella? Estella?
Yes, good evening. My name is Chloe Marie Ashrea. I have been a faithful student worker for two years. Between working for this building, this very building, and the Theater Arts Department, this campus has provided me with opportunities I would have never been granted elsewhere. Because of student work, I have heavily considered redirecting my career path and fully focusing on theater arts. This past year, I was asked to be the Theater Arts Department's Stage Manager. Not many people understand my title or what responsibilities fall on my shoulders, but one of them requires tending to the black box and its needs. For months, I've been the only student worker who knows how to run it. I've taken so much pride in this space. Everyone there, from professors to classmates alike, know my name. Without me, rehearsals cannot run smoothly. My list of responsibilities goes on. To learn this past week, I would now have to audit a course. To continue as the Department's Stage Manager is outrageous. There's too much I do around this building to spend my time as a student. I've worked so hard to be placed in this position just for it to be unfairly ripped away from me because of ABC's inability to properly acknowledge the Theater Arts Department and what it takes to keep it running. I have every good reason to believe we've been careless with our funds, are cherry-picking which departments we deem important, and insulted that a resume for my replacement was sent the next day to my director shortly after I learned I had lost my job. Not only was I supposed to continue working for the theater, but I was supposed to take charge of the Film Department's Equipment Room. Do you expect students to run that for free? Do you expect students to love their department so much they'll voluntarily still take on tasks they should be rightfully paid for? We are already limited to only twenty hours per week. Do you expect the quarter that you have left of your student worker force to pick up the slack you've now created once you began to feel the pressure of our absence come five weeks late into the semester? I am fresh-graded and at a loss. I do not have facts or statistics or anything to offer, but my story at this point. I hope it is enough to make the Board care for not only mine, but majority of our student workers' current dilemma. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And the reason why I wanted you four to stand there, student work is important. Student work matters. And I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Zellet because I know she has something she wants to tell you. But, Mr. Barr, when you come up about the budget, I do want to hear about student equity funds and where we are with that. Dr. Zellet, I will let you go ahead and tell them what you need to.
Thank you.
I want to thank you all for, it takes courage to come and present publicly about things that are personal to you. So, thank you for having the courage to do that, and thank you for doing it in, in the manner in which you did. Today, I arranged with your ASO president to hold a meeting Friday at eleven-thirty in the Student Lounge, addressing this issue. And so, I will send the four of you personal invitations to that meeting because I want to hear from the students who are impacted by this, and I want to know the scope of the issue so that we can, we can arrive at solutions together. So, if you're unable to make it on Friday, then respond to the email, and we'll arrange another time so that we can have a conversation.
That would be great, thank you.
So, bam, speaking up works. Thank you for coming, okay?
Appreciate it, thank you. Thank you for hearing us.
Yes.
So, I mentioned earlier that the budget was cut for student equity. I only know this fact because of facts from, I've heard from my boss. And the number was from, roughly around from three million dollars to one million dollars. And something outrageous like that. It was something outrageous that I've learned from, from my boss, and I could be wrong. But what I know, and what I know is important, is that all of the Arts and Humanities Departments are suffering right now. A lot of STEM is suffering right now. And like Chloe mentioned earlier, there are only a quarter of the student workforce left. And that is not fair. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. We appreciate all four of you. Thank you. Ms. Pamela Ford.
Good evening, Board members, President Zellet, and Bridget. I come to you tonight to speak on behalf of our students. And I have a concern. When I went out to the parking lot, I saw police cadets going around taking pictures of cars and looking at parking permits and all that. I work in the CalWorks program. I'm a CalWorks program coordinator, and that's what I'm speaking to you as. I'm asking that maybe we reconsider the time period that we're utilizing to not ticket students for not having parking permits? Because even though the first two weeks of the semester, there's adds and drops, after that, students are still running around trying to get in and out of classes. And I don't think it's fair that they should have to be worrying about whether or not they're going to get a ticket when they're running into the Student Services Building, trying to get all this taken care of. So, if you can reconsider the time period and maybe move that to the end of September. But I just think that it's asking, I mean, it's hard to find parking spaces. Students are trying to get to class on time, and I think we need to consider what they're going to. We've all been students, right? So, let's think about them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. We now have presentations. Edunav Update eleven point one. Oh, before we start, I'm sorry, Mr. Shawmi. I have Tamira Palmetto at eleven point one with a public comment card.
Hello, good evening, Board members, President Zellet, Patty, Bridget. So, I'm Tamira Palmetto. I'm here from Counseling, and I'm here actually with good news and an ask. So, I'm here to speak about the Edunav update. I want to thank everybody for the process and the time and all the support. But it's a big lift. I know they're going to be talking to you about the purchase of DegreeWorks, which is an audit system that Edunav can use. We don't know that it will actually work, so we need to give it some, you know, some leeway here, right? Like a year test drive, see if it actually works, which we hope it will. And it's going to need a lot of support. The big failing with Edunav is that we did not support the implementation, right? We had a scribe that was working half-time in counseling, half-time scribing. We kind of did this, you know, ad hoc, you know? We were going to try to get it done. If we're going to actually make this work, we need an audit system that's robust, where students can have upfront transcript evaluation, where that transcript information from outside schools is loaded into an actual degree audit that then feeds Edunav. But that all takes human power. Right now, in Banner, we have seventy thousand courses, yes, roughly seventy thousand courses that have to be reviewed. This is the articulation officer, this is evaluators, this is counselors. We have to go through school by school, clean it up. Be that way, we're feeding good information in, like Michelle Lathropova says. Bad information in, bad information out, right? So, we have to get that cleaned up. That's going to take a lot of time and a lot of effort. We need consultants, we need people to come and show us how they have done this so we don't like spin our wheels for seven years like we've been doing. So, my ask for you is that we, when you guys get requests for counselors, evaluators, consultants, people, to make this work, that you say yes. Because we have to support it, that way it actually works. Otherwise, we're going to be right here, seven years from now, talking about DegreeWorks and why it didn't work, and I know none of us want that. And I do want to thank everybody for the process because it has been quite, it's been very collaborative. And I really appreciate the commitment that VP Padron and Dr. Brier have given us for the support that it's going to take to make this work, and all the effort of ITS. Director Connor, and Michelle Lathrop, and Lisa O'Leary, Kim Covell. It is going to take a lot of people, and a lot more people in ITS, too. So, I'm sure you're going to see a lot of requests for support because it's just, it's an enormous task. So, with that, I'm going to stop talking. I'm going to let them present the good news, and, you know, look forward to meeting with you later.
Thank you for that. I read eleven point one, the Edunav presentation.
Do we have the presentation? Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zellet. Nope, wrong one. You can see it?
Right, it's streaming on YouTube correctly, in the audience.
Okay, we can just continue. They should have copies right back there on the table. They should have. I'll go ahead and get started. That's the Edunav? Okay, good evening again, Board of Trustees, President Zellet, student trustee, and members of the public. My colleagues and I, this evening, are presenting an update on Edunav. As you may recall, Edunav is a degree-planning software used by counseling and accessed by students. Next slide, please. Tonight's presentation will provide an overview of our history with Edunav. Then we'll move into the progress we've made. We'll present a five-year plan, which shows a conservative timeline of implementation and process changes. We're good. Thank you. And then we'll conclude with an update from Student Services. Next slide, please. I'll provide an overview of the history, and Daniel Connor, our Director of Enterprise Applications, will discuss our progress and the implementation plan. Next slide, please. ABC started with Edunav in 2017 through a three-year contract. The software was not fully implemented when we renewed again for another three-year contract in 2020. In 2021, a pilot program was released to incoming students. In 2023, Edunav was released to all ABC students. There were issues with the accuracy of data for some students and related workflow issues that were preventing counseling from fully adopting the system. Due to these concerns, the Boards approved a one-year contract extension to further evaluate the system. That happened in October of 2023. Since that time, ITS, Student Services, Academic Affairs... Since that time, ITS, Student Services, Academic Affairs, we've been meeting regularly to develop a go-forward strategy and explore options for a degree audit system to complement Edunav. And that is where we are today. We plan to request another one-year extension for Edunav at the upcoming October board meeting. At this time, we have a strategy in place that has buy-in and support from Counseling, Student Services, Academic Affairs, ITS, and of course, my office. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Daniel Connor to walk you through the steps that we've taken to get us to where we are today.
Good evening. Next slide, please. Edunav is a tool designed to support students in managing their academic progress through personalized planning and tracking. It works most effectively with a degree audit system like DegreeWorks. By implementing DegreeWorks, we will align with best practices and help students make informed decisions about their courses and academic progress. DegreeWorks will also assist counselors in creating clear degree audits that show both completed and pending requirements for a degree. Also, DegreeWorks is used by more than 30 California community colleges. Next slide, please. Counselors gave important feedback on Edunav during last October's board meeting. Since then, we have been holding cross-functional meetings with Academic Affairs, Counseling, ITS, and Enrollment Services. We assigned a full-time resource to support Edunav and are beginning the procurement process to acquire DegreeWorks. Also, we have collected two-year schedule data, and Edunav is in the process of integrating our data. Next slide, please. Next, I'm going to go over our five-year plan for degree audit and planning. The goals for this implementation are focused on meeting the needs of the district while finding ways to improve degree planning and degree auditing at Antelope Valley College. Next slide, please. First, we're forming a project steering committee to oversee project direction. We will work towards addressing project objectives and requirements by following a project plan. Project meetings will assist in ensuring the project is efficient and continually moving forward. 2025, DegreeWorks will be installed, configured, and integrated with Edunav and Banner. We will also finish implementing upfront transcript evaluations. We will be working with a consultant to help clean up ABC's transfer articulation data that is found in the Banner form shetator. In 2026, DegreeWorks will be rolled out to a limited number of staff members as a pilot. We will make changes to DegreeWorks configuration based on the feedback we receive. In 2027, DegreeWorks will be rolled out to all users, and it will closely be monitored and issues will be promptly addressed. In 2028, enhancement requests will be reviewed, prioritized, and implemented. Next slide, please. All right, I'm passing it on to Vice President Pedron.
Good evening. Next slide, please. We have been very busy, not only between Student Services, Academic Affairs, and Administrative Services. We've been meeting weekly. We've also been meeting to address issues, give feedback, and really have an idea of what the challenges are with the system and to discuss. And then find ways to have workflow meetings and changes and update our processes. Not only are we meeting weekly with each other, we're meeting weekly with the Edunav folks. And then I'm also having monthly calls with Edunav executive leadership. Next slide, please. So this graph shows after registering, students are asked to rate their experience. And our rates have showed over the past year that 3.56 on average of 4.26 students are happy with Edunav. We have had close to about 10,000 educational plans, almost maybe up to 15 to 20 educational plans done collectively in this form. And we are very glad to, next slide, state that we are in a process kind of to... Final thoughts, my next slide, please, yes. We are happy to report that, I'm so glad that the Chair of the Counseling Division Office was here to share that we have been very collaborative in this approach. And we've reviewed internal processes, as stated by my colleagues today. We've changed workflow patterns. We have a better understanding of the issues and the needs of the stakeholders, not the stakeholders just as users, but the counselors and everywhere in between with Academic Affairs and ITS. So I think we have a kind of a together, we can accomplish more initiative. We're trying to, all of us be there. We've sat there for many, many weeks, listening and being, we're all in. And we're planning for the future. We have in mind to have DegreeWorks, ideally, you know, planning in for early alert system. But we can all do, of course, all these things are going to be done with the approval of the Board of Trustees. And so I want to say that we're happy to be here at this place right now. It's taken a lot of work collectively, and I think that we're in a good place, and I want to thank you.
Okay, before you go, let's see if the Board of Trustees have any questions. Mr. Reeves?
It was my impression that we gave a renewal of this program for one year to clean up errors and everything that was going on with it. So tonight, we get a report. It sounds like we have more bureaucracy. What's been resolved specifically? Do we have counselors here? We have students here saying that it looks like there's going to be improvement? No, we have the administrators, they're going to continue having meetings and talking about this, and they want to renew it for another year so they can talk about it another year. What concrete things have been done to improve this program?
Well, the first thing we did, so when we came here a year ago, a request was made. There were several key requests, and I think a slide, I'm going to see if this works. It doesn't. Could we back up a few slides, please?
I think for the progress that has been made.
There was progress made. There were requests made from counseling. And before I go on and answer the question, I just want to thank Dean Elise, the counseling staff that's provided input and that works with us weekly on top of their regular daily duties. I mean, the commitment that's been there, it hasn't just been bureaucrats sitting here talking. It's been real work, looking at real issues that are in the system and looking at discrepancies in the data. There has been real tangible work and effort over the last year, numerous meetings as well, but meetings that have been productive and have put us in a place where we now have a plan. We've identified internal processes that need improvement, workflows. It's, a system will never accomplish by itself what we needed to accomplish, right? This is going to take changes in workflows, additional changes in maybe even in duties or workflows and work that is happening in Student Services. It's going to take effort from ITS. So this application, we've maximized what we can from this application. It's there. Now we know we need a degree audit tool. We need to, we know we need to clean up some database tables and some issues there. We've identified all of those, and I think that was the hardest aspect here. The next part of it is actually easier than what we've done in the past year. So we're not going to come and ask you for a three-year renewal or even a two-year renewal. We're going to come and ask you for another one-year renewal, because we want to continue to evaluate the product that we have to see if it's even necessary to continue because of the changes that we've identified here that we need to make.
Are you going to bring counselors and let me hear?
And counselors are here.
The counselors?
Yes. One counselor is here. But, but, but we are hoping, I mean, any, you know, please share.
Dr. Brier, yes, thank you so much. We've already heard from the counselor. I do have a question for you. I remember the question from the Board of Trustees being, does Edunav work? What I'm seeing is that you've had this committee, a cross-functional committee get together. They said, okay, we need more technical support because Edunav needs an analyst. Okay, so that's a full-time role we gave. We need a degree audit system that talks to Banner. Well, that's, I don't really understand how that goes with Edunav, but I'm just thinking Banner and Edunav are two compatible systems. Okay, so I have that right. And then fix the two-year schedule, and we need upfront evaluations. What I'm really asking you in a more concrete way, are we throwing good money after bad?
We are not at this time, and that's why we're coming to you with a one-year proposal. We are very cost-conscious here, right? And so we're, the last thing we want to do is carry on a product that isn't meeting our needs.
Right.
And so all of the, all of the applications and the workflows that you've described, they are all needed to better serve our students. Because if our students are getting erroneous data, right? Then you, the first question you ask is, does it work? No, it does not work. But the reason it doesn't work isn't Edunav, it is our systems.
I hear you.
And so we have to implement those systems. We have to make those changes internally to our workflows, our processes, and then it will work. And then the decision is up to us, do we want to keep this system or not? Right now, due to some compliance requirements, we are in a position that we have to complete, keep this system, you know, to be in compliance with those regulations.
Yeah, that makes so much sense. So in a year, what we should hear from this group is, Edunav has served us well with the additional supports that we've put in place? Or we know we have the supports to make these structures work well, and we know Edunav is not doing the job. Is that what we can expect to hear in a year?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Or that we don't need to continue with this application, because what we've implemented through DegreeWorks and upfront evaluations, they are meeting the need.
Enough of all of it, right. That makes a lot of sense, does it? Yes, Barbara?
Thank you, Madam President. Mr. Connor, I have a question for you. Thank you. Does your company have a history or any prior experience working with Edunav?
I work here at Antelope Valley College. I am proud to be an employee here. I am the Director of Enterprise Applications and Data Protection.
Do you know, I apologize, I thought you were with DegreeWorks. Do you have, do you know if DegreeWorks has prior compatibility, I guess is the best word, with Edunav?
Yes. Edunav was actually designed to integrate with a degree audit system such as DegreeWorks. And most of the clients, most of the Edunav clients have a degree audit system, specifically DegreeWorks.
That's good to hear. One more question for VP Pedron. Can you tell me currently how many counselors we have serving our student population? And in your opinion, do we need more? Is it an inadequate number? Just approximate, if you could.
Well, we're currently have augmented our part-time counseling pool in order to work and meet the demands of the current population. And I don't, I have, I want to say it's like...
I'm going to give rough numbers.
Rough numbers, yeah.
Rough numbers, about 20 full-time. We've just had, we lost somebody.
20 full-time?
Around 20 full-time. We just lost someone unexpectedly that was a full-time person. We have roughly that number of adjunct, but the adjuncts might work five hours a week. They might work seven hours a week. They often work at multiple campuses. So if we're actually looking at full-time equivalent faculty, the adjuncts don't add up to very much. So we do not have the staff. If you actually look at counseling, counseling has, you know, categorical, right? So like myself and John Wanko, we work in OSD. Our primary job is doing accommodations. That's two full-time counselors. You have two full-time...
Do we offer internships for college students?
That we could, we have had internships before, but then you're pulling a full-time counselor to work with that intern and train them. So it's not helping the situation. We're actually like taking more hours away from somebody who could be meeting with students. So when you're looking at actual general counseling, I think we figured out numbers. It's something like a ratio of like seven, it's actually, it was like more like 1,000 that I sent you. When you look at actual general counseling, people that are counselors, that are there to meet with students when they show up for walk-ins or anything else. I mean, the ratio is like insane. It's like 700 to, or 1,000 to one. I mean, there's no way to keep up. And then if you're going to cover, you know, 70,000 courses, transcript, upfront transcript evaluation, we asked to start doing that. 10,000 transcripts were loaded into the database to be evaluated, like in a day. I mean, that's, it's a lot of work.
And that's where the technical programs like, I'm sorry, what's this? Yes, DegreeWorks, because when you look at it, Edunav, it says, is a navigation system for the student on campus like you would use, you know, to get around town.
Well, but this is the thing, that has to be evaluated. So every course from another college, we have to use it as it was used at that college. So if you took a philosophy course at College of the Canyons, and it's equivalent to, let's say, Philosophy 106 here, and we use it for critical thinking. And then as a counselor, I go, oh, well, it even has the same CID. I'm going to use it for critical thinking. Guess what? They don't. And that student's not going to transfer, because they'd missed a critical thinking course. So each course has to be evaluated, not only for what that course is in terms of equivalency, but how it's used. All that has to be fed and cleaned up in Banner. That is roughly 70,000 courses. That is a huge lift for a counseling department that is already kind of at beyond max in terms of ratios. So that's why I was up here before saying, so when you see requests for support, they're real.
Please support it, yes.
Yes.
So I have just one other. I believe, are we at some, somewhere now like 16,000 some students enrolled at ABC? Am I close to that number?
14,300 plus.
Okay, I saw on our website, it said 16,000 plus. And so I was doing the math, I was doing the math with regard to the counselors, and you're absolutely right. The numbers are...
A quick corrective, though. She said general counseling. We do have programs that have dedicated counselors to those programs. And so there are segments of that population of students in EOPS and CARE and Umoja and Puente. There are dedicated counselors to those programs. And granted, it's not thousands upon thousands of students, but there, there's some give and take there, and we have to figure out how to navigate the allocation of our resources such that we're maximizing the potential.
Right, right, but, but EOPS, I mean, is mandated. They have a certain number of students that they're allowed. They have two full-time counselors, and that's all that they do. And they have to meet with their students three times a semester. OSD, we have to do accommodations. I might not get to an ed plan until, you know, two weeks or... Most of my schedule, back-to-back intakes, accommodations, accommodation review, accommodation requests, instructor issues. We, so that's two full-time counselors, and we are doing ed plans, but that's not our primary. So that's four full-time counselors that are not meeting with the general population, AB 928. Every student has to meet with someone and get an actual education plan. We need numbers, and we don't have them. And we support the entire campus, the entire student population. We have counselors that are dedicated to areas of study. We have counselors, and you're right, we do have counselors for Umoja and for Puente, but those are split. So those are our general counselors, who are then being released from general counseling to do work in EOPS or doing work, I mean, in Umoja or Puente. When requests come in for programs like the Teacher Accelerated Preparation Program, which is a wonderful program, they need a full-time counselor. They don't hire a full-time counselor, they pull one of ours, right? Now, they're funding someone as a temporary one-year, but they're taking a full-time tenured counselor, and they're funding a one-year temp. And we're limping along with a temp in that place. So when we're talking about getting these, you know, these programs in place for our students, we have to build them and staff them so that they actually work. I mean, these courses can't be evaluated by a machine. It has to be evaluated by people, by the articulation officer, by evaluators, right? The transcripts, 10,000 transcripts that need to be evaluated and roughly 70,000 courses that need to be cleaned up with the attributes added, so.
Mr. Buffalo?
Can you give me a perspective of how we are versus other community colleges of similar size? Do we have equivalents? In terms of counselors, are we low or we...
We can, we can get, take a look at that and get back to you.
That'd be great.
I just also want to say that, I'm sorry for eating candy, but it's getting late and I'm hungry. But I do want to say that this is an issue from the K-12 sector, all the way through higher education. As we become more aware of what students' needs are, some of the mental health crisis that we see happening, we are beginning to understand something that I think basic educators have known all along, that counselors play such a critical role in the success of a graduate. So we're with you, we're here, we're listening. We're glad that you guys found what supporting programs you needed for Edunav to do what it was doing on the student-facing side. And then what I was most proud of is that DegreeWorks, I saw, it works on the counseling side. Now, I'm starting to see symmetry of alignment here, and I realize that we are moving this thing... And I realize that we are moving this thing forward. And that's our job on behalf of kids. So, thank you all so, so much. We really appreciate your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay. We are to... Our consent agenda. Oh, no? Oh. How can I, you wish, don't you? Come on, Mr. Brier. We have to have our budget update for 2024.
Okay. Good evening again, Board of Trustees, President Zelik, Student Board Member, and members of the public. Tonight, I'm presenting the 2425 Adopted Budget Report. The budget proposal for California Community Colleges focuses on stability in 2425. The state budget includes deficits, deferrals, and a COLA for community colleges. The state is facing a multi-year budget deficit. In 2425, the deficit is projected to be $45 billion and $30 billion in 2526. These are large deficits, and the state is proposing cuts in many areas outside of education. The California Community Colleges did not experience any major reduction in the state budget. The state budget withdraws $8.4 billion from the Prop 98 Rainy Day Fund. It includes a 1.07% COLA, $28.1 million to fund enrollment growth, $60 million for nursing programs and pathways, dollars for other investments, and finally, it defers $446 million from 2324 to 2425, and $244 million from 2425 to 2526. For 2425, the standard financial reporting deadlines are in effect, and the district anticipates it'll be able to meet these requirements for financial reporting, which includes completing the adopted budget, making it public by September 30th, and submitting the 2324 audit to the Chancellor's Office by December 31st. Shown here is an overview of the Student-Centered Funding Formula, which calculates apportionments using three allocations. Base allocation is 70% based on FTES. Supplemental allocation is 20% based on counts of low-income students. And the student success allocation, which makes up 10%, and is based on counts of outcomes in multiple categories. The SCIF funding level in 2425 will be the new funding floor going forward. It will not have a COLA, but our funding amount will be a minimum as we go forward. The 2425 rates are shown here. The new for-credit FTES rate will be $5,294. In the second column was the 2324 rate. If you apply the 1.07% COLA, you move to 5,294. That is how it's being calculated. And now, moving on to our local budget and beginning with the 2324 unaudited actials. We started the 2324 year with $53.2 million in unrestricted, in the unrestricted general fund. We had revenue of $110.2 million. Expenditures and other outgoing totaled $93.6 million, leaving an ending fund balance of $69.7 million. After assignments, we have an unassigned ending fund balance of $34.4 million, which equates to a reserve of 34.6%. That's a good reserve that'll help us as the state navigates its budget challenges or its fiscal challenges. Shown here is a summary. Shown here is a summary for unaudited actials for all funds. Revenues for all funds total $216 million. Expenditures total $220.9 million, resulting in a deficit of $5 million due to Measure AV funds being spent down. Moving on to the budget and budget assumptions. These were the assumptions used to develop the current-year budget. Again, the budget assumes a COLA of 1.07%. We assumed FTES of $9,926 from the Annual 320 Report, and we assumed a deficit factor of 3.5%. We included the 4% negotiated salary increase, step and column increases, current employer pension contribution rates, inflationary factors, long-term commitments, and ongoing obligations. Those assumptions informed the 2425 adopted budget. The unrestricted general fund in 2425 has a beginning fund balance of $69.7 million. Revenue is projected to total $106.5 million, and expenditures and other outgoing are projected to be $111.6 million, leaving an ending fund balance of $64.7 million. Assignments include capital projects protection, reserve for pension stabilization, IT reserve, and others. After assignments, the unassigned ending fund balance is projected to be $28.9 million. $30.9 million, equating to a reserve, no, $28.9 million, equating to a reserve of 30.9%. My apologies. Shown here is the 2425 adopted budget summary for all funds. Revenues for all funds total $286.3 million. Expenditures $324.3 million, resulting in a deficit of $37.9 million, again, due to Measure AV. Next, we have a summary of labor costs and how they've changed from fiscal year 2324 to 2425. In 2324, labor costs represented 84% of unrestricted expenditures. And in 2425, they decreased to 78% of unrestricted expenditures. This is in line with our internal estimates. Enrollment. I'm pleased to report that enrollment is on a positive upswing. In blue is our actual enrollment. And in orange is our funded FTES from 2014 to 2023. We can see that COVID, we can see the COVID dip and the recovery that's currently underway. We believe that FTES will cross the 10,000-level threshold for fiscal year 2324 when our finalized figures are submitted. In the budget, we assumed FTES would be flat, but we know that enrollment is growing. In summary, the fiscal situation today is better than it could have been, but there's a significant risk and reason for concern from the state. We got a COLA and avoided cuts, but we also got deferrals. Our ending fund balance gives us short-term stability, but we're very much dependent on the state's financial situation for our long-term health. We can't use one-time dollars to fix ongoing challenges, and our fund balance is one-time dollars. We plan on staying informed and up-to-date on the budgetary outlook, and we plan on communicating information and updates as they become available. Questions?
Thank you so much, Dr. Brier. Questions? Let's start with Ms. Gaines.
Vice President Barb, thank you, first of all, for your reports. I really don't have a question regarding your budget that you presented this evening. I'd just like for you to advise. I would love to have a report regarding financial aid. And I realized there was a FAFSA issue. But I would like to, I would like for someone to explain to us why it's taking so long for our students to get their Pell Grants, et cetera. When you, when you look at the Pell Grant on their financial aid, it shows the money is here at Antelope Valley Community College. So, I would like, possibly in the near future, I would like to hear, because this is putting a burden-
Sure.
-on our students. Students who have to purchase things, students who need things, that they, we're asking them to walk into class unprepared with the inability to really engage with what the professor asked them to have. And so, I would like to know, what is the, I get that some people sometimes get the financial aid, and they take off. But we have a lot of students here who are earnestly trying to get their degrees and their certificates. So, I think we can do better. I would like to have that presentation in the very near future.
We will provide that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Gaines. Trustee Reeves?
Yes. Mr. Vice President, I thank you and President Zelik for reaching out to the board members individually to talk about the budget. And when we have this on an agenda item in a little bit, I will go into more comment about some changes I'd like to make. I noticed, though, we were given the tentative budget. And then, in our discussion with you and Dr. Zelik, we were given a sheet of paper with the budget. And tonight, we're given another sheet of paper with the budget. There's a little discrepancy in some of these numbers and stuff.
Sure.
You know, in the future, let's have one piece of paper, you know, period.
If I can respond to that. So, Mr. Reeves, the tentative budget is very much tentative because the state hasn't finalized their budget. So, that figure will change because it's dependent upon what information the state has given us. So, the tentative budget is based on the May revise, right? And then after the May revise, the governor adopts the state budget. And then there are also trailer bills, which we then incorporate into our adopted budget. So, the timeline from the tentative through the adopted, it's a, it's a constant work in progress with updates happening daily in the budget document. And so, that is why, and I, we try to say in all of our meetings that this is, it's very fluid. We don't expect any major changes, but there are small changes that are going to occur as more information becomes available. And it is becoming available up until the end. So, it's a very tight timeline from when the enacted budget is published and those trailer bills come through to when we finalize the budget and submit it to the board for approval here.
Now, these are projections, and projections are not always outcomes, are they?
They are not, but we are also reporting unaudited actials. So, unaudited actials have to get finalized, and they determine our beginning fund balances.
Okay. I'll have more to say when this item comes up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you so much, VP Brier.
Thank you.
We are now to consent agenda. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student Trustee Rivera?
I approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are to 13 action items. 13.1, approval of the 2425 adopted budget. May I get a vote? I'm- Thank you so much. I meant motion. The vote, Patty?
Student Trustee Rivera?
I approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Aye.
Trustee Reeves? Trustee Buffalo? Yes, sir?
Yes, and we- Yes, we call for discussion, sir. Yes, I'm calling for a discussion.
Okay, thank you.
You're more than welcome. What would you like to tell us?
I've been on the board almost four years.
Please use your microphone.
Cut your mic on, Mr. Reeves.
I've been on the board for four years. Nothing has troubled me more since I've been on the board than this budget. It has really rattled me. Particularly since 83, 84% of our money comes from the state. And they have like a $45 billion deficit now. And despite what was said, they're projecting maybe a $73 billion deficit next year. So, you know, that's something to be concerned about. Okay. We have a budget committee made of many people on the campus, different disciplines. But the board is not on, this is for the board. I want to know if we want to continue the same process that we have now on the budget. We have advisory, people from the outside in the community. They give us their comments unofficially. We have the budget committee that works on the budget, but we don't have a member of the Board of Trustees on the budget. And I'm told that's because the board policy, blah, 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 doesn't have a board member on this budget committee. So, we don't get the budget until July and know what's going on here. Instead of following the process from the beginning with having maybe a couple of board members on the budget committee to get their input and report back to the board, so when July comes, it's not some big surprise, and it's not some big deadline that we're going to have to meet in September. So, I am suggesting, and I would like to hear what the board says, do we continue this budget process the way we have it? Or do we change it and have a board member or two involved in the process as it goes along? I would like a comment on that, please.
Just a point of clarification, sir. You referenced an outside advisory committee. And in the budget document, when we discussed that, I clarified for you that the president's advisory council is not an advisory council for the budget. It's a strategic committee that we talk with mostly about workforce development. And we use that information as we take it back to the local planning process for strategic planning. So, I just want to be clear that that's not an outside community input into our budget and planning, into our budget process. And I also want to clarify that the board has purview over board policy, and there is board policy that starts this whole process in place. And it gives us the guidelines by which this whole institution operates in the budget and planning process. And so, I just want to clarify those two things. Because the board is not absent from the process. It is very present at the level of policy. It is not present in the details, but we all know that the board's purview is policy. So, I just want to make that clear.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I would like, we're going to vote on the budget, but I'd like to come up with a motion that a board member, or two board members be, two board members be on the budget committee.
It's not agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
So, is there, you know, that, I'm calling for the motion.
We have to agendize items for the public so that they can have time to speak on them and be involved. Yeah, so we're just at 13.1. We're at approval of the 2425 adopted budget. Do we have any more discussion about that?
No, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, Mr. Reeves. May we have the vote?
Student Trustee Rivera?
I approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
No.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
3.2, approval of side letter agreement between the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, ABCFT, and Antelope Valley Community College District, AVCCD, regarding Bill 105 CRN number 75231 and Bill 106 CRN number 710544, fall of 2024. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student Trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Yay.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
13.3, approval of side letter of agreement between the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers, ABCFT, and Antelope Valley College Community District, AVCCD, regarding Respiratory Therapy Program Director. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student Trustee Rivera?
Approve.
Trustee Gaines?
Approve.
Trustee Reeves?
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo?
Yes.
Trustee Adams?
Aye.
Trustee Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
13.4, is approval of consultant services agreement between the NCHERM Group National Center for Higher Education Risk Management, LLC, DBA, TNG Consulting, and Antelope Valley Community College District to provide training, certifications on standards and best practices, risk assessment, safety measures, behavioral intervention, and ongoing support and resources. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, Madam President.
Yes.
In the budget that we just approved, $8 million is spent on consultants. Is that money being used for 13.4?
The budget source is unrestricted funds, as indicated in the items, sir. The budget source is unrestricted funds as indicated in the item, sir.
Thank you.
The vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Aye.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen five, approval of school excess liability fund self and the Antelope Valley Community College District for liability insurance in compliance with AB two eighteen. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen six is approval to extend catering services agreements with Still Waters Food Service, Inc., Filomeno Barrios Doing Business as Family Barrios Catering, and Ricardo Barrera Doing Business as Izzy Taco's House for maximum term not to exceed five years. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Yes, Madam. Go ahead. Let's start. Madam President. Ms. Reeves, I'm sorry. Ms. Gaines. Yes, Madam President. These, these businesses that are listed in thirteen point six, have we, have we used any of these businesses before?
Yes, ma'am, we have.
Yes.
Okay, Madam President, one of the difficulties we had when we had food trucks on the campus was the price. It was very prohibited to the students. And that's why, and I'm proud to say I pushed it, we opened a cafeteria again and we have reasonably priced food for students. I don't see the point of having food trucks back on the campus that charge in exorbitant prices to students. Can somebody justify that?
May I do a follow-up, please? I believe that students should have choice. I think it's critical that we, not everybody likes the same food. And I believe that that's our, that is the best way that we can provide for all students is to provide them with choice.
And, and to provide extra clarity, this is permission for catering for campus events because there are times when our in-house food service is pretty overwhelmed and it's helpful to have variety in this way. And so, this is permission to enter, enter contracts for campus catering events.
Madam President, when we were discussing food trucks before, one of the items I brought up, do these food trucks have health permits? And it was explained to me they have business licenses. That's not a health permit. You can get a business license to operate in Lancaster, but you have to get a health permit from the county to operate. And that was never explained that these food trucks had health permits and the college made sure they had health permits before they allowed them to serve food to the students.
I'm sure they've met all requirements. Dr. Brian?
All of these, all of them have health permits. They are licensed and these are for large catering events. They are not for onsite, you know, just for, for daily food truck business, so it's for special events. But they are licensed, they do have health permits and they do also have business licenses. That is something that our team vets prior to letting anybody on campus sell food.
Thank you. Just my comment is I think it's great seeing that we are a diverse community to have diverse foods. I'm a foodie, so I'm all in. May we get the vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
No.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen seven is approval of the twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-five winter and non-traditional men and women's sports schedules. May I have a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen eight, approval of memorandum of understanding between JVS SoCal Work Source Center and Antelope Valley College to enhance employment opportunities and career development services for students. May I get a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Motion carries.
We are at thirteen point nine, approval to utilize the Foundation for California Community College Master Agreement with Timely Telehealth LLC for mental and general telemedicine care for the Antelope Valley College students. May I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen ten is approval of agreement for the provision of instructional programs between California State University Bakersfield to provide a location for students in a master's program in counseling. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen eleven, approval of amendment zero one of the local agreement for early education services, allocation letter for twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, to increase maximum reimbursable amount, MRA. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen twelve, approval of grant sub-recipient agreement between Santa Clarita Community College District, ASCCCD, via the Small Business Development Center in Antelope Valley Community College District to assist with the Economic Mobility Initiative, EMI. May I get a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen thirteen, approval of grant application and memorandum of understanding between Antelope Valley Union High School District and Antelope Valley College for the twenty-four, twenty-five Perkins Grant allocation. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Trustees, I would like to group thirteen fourteen through thirteen twenty. They are all IT projects. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen point twenty-one, approval of contract with Enrich Energy Solutions, Inc., for the administration building CAT six recabling project. May I get a motion?
Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen point two-two, approval of master services agreement with Packet Fusion for phone system support services. May I get a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Yes.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Trustees, I would like to group together thirteen point twenty-three through thirteen point twenty-five, which are all field contracts. May I get a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thirteen twenty-six is approval of final notice of completion and resolution of acceptance on the boiler replacement project number seventeen dash zero four one for Rollins Mechanical Corp. with scheduled maintenance funds. May I get a motion?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Vote?
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Trustees, I'm going to ask to go ahead and group thirteen point two-seven and thirteen point two-eight as they are also measure AV funds. May I get a motion?
So move. Second.
Discussion?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, Mr. Reeves.
We're going to vote on the Commons Project tonight. That's forty million dollars. And in that new building, there'll be a new cafeteria. I'm going to approve, vote to approve this project, but I'm sorry that the project wasn't a multi-purpose building, like classrooms in addition to the student services. Because I really thought that if we had classrooms, maybe Cal State, Bakersfield could have used it. But we'll save that for another day. But from what I've seen, the Commons is going to be a beautiful building and students will appreciate the beautiful cafeteria and the meeting rooms in there. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Reeves, the vote.
Student trustee Rivera.
Approve.
Trustee Gaines.
Approve.
Trustee Reeves.
Yes.
Trustee Buffalo.
Trustee Adams.
Aye.
Trustee Harvey.
Yes.
Motion carries.
We are now to fourteen reports and announcements. Fourteen point one is the academic senate, Hal Huntsman, and then we will move to the Antelope Valley College Federation of Teachers next, which will be Dr. Jason Bowen.
Good evening, trustees, President Zelik, Ms. McClure, Ms. Cook. First of all, I want to really thank the, well, really everyone who was involved with the work on EDGNAV. This was, in my opinion, an example of what we can do when we collaborate and really truly work together. And I, I just would like to see more of that. It's wonderful and I really, am really proud of the progress that's been made and excited for, for the possibility that, you know, we'll get something that really works well for our students. As you know, the semester has begun and it's actually been quite exciting. There's definitely a palpable feeling of having more students on campus, which has been nice to see. And, you know, there's this good energy and you feel, you can feel the, the more student energy, you might say. So, to me, it's been really nice and lots of faculty that I've talked to have said similar kinds of things. Tonight, I wish to highlight the work of one of our communications studies faculty. Her name is Tina McDermott. She has worked here at the college for many years and she has done so many different things at the college that I can't, I'm not sure I've got them all. For example, she has been tenure coordinator. She has been accreditation coordinator. She has been very involved with civic engagement work here on campus with our students, including voter registration campaign, which she's currently, I was just at an event this weekend, or a couple of weeks ago, at which she was in the lobby with many other students, registering students who were coming to the event. She's just extremely active. Her colleagues call her a consummate professional who problem solves often behind the scenes, but she uses communication and real diplomacy skills. She's also a popular teacher who is respected by her students. She also happens to be a professional singer in a past life. Yes, I was surprised to learn that myself. And I just want to close that, this with, she exemplifies what faculty should be. She's a positive force and she makes working at the college better. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. After Dr. Bowen, we will have Antelope Valley College Federation of Classified Employees, Ms. Ford.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'd like to thank and the current union team. We've achieved a great deal in our advocacy efforts for faculty and it's this team that's made all of this success possible for us. Kathy Osborne is our vice president, a great friend. She provides invaluable counsel. Mr. Kent Moser is our treasurer. Dr. Aurora Byrd is our secretary. She's a new secretary. Dr. David Adams is our new grievance officer. grievance officer. And we have the appointed officers. Dr. Amy Andrade is our membership and communications director. Dr. Scott Lee is our political director and also our lead negotiator. Ms. Tamara Pimento de Spain is a member of our negotiations team and Mr. Eugene Segal is also a member of our negotiations team. I'd also like to thank Arian Johnson, who is our CFT representative and he, we talked for four hours Saturday. And then, of course, I have to thank Ms. Pamela Ford for also contributing to so much of our success. We had a lengthy conversation this morning and I'd like to thank you for that. Now, so as a union team, what we've learned how to do recently is we've learned how to write and author our own purb charges. And when I say author, I mean a hundred percent of some of the purb charges that we've written, we didn't even receive aid from AI. So they are truly a hundred percent authored. Now, with that said, filing purb charges is not something that I want to do. It's time-consuming. It absorbs a considerable amount of resources that we can expend elsewhere. And what my hope is, is that we can resolve matters at the lowest level. Now, when we cannot, and it's clear to me that there's contract violations, language, violations of board policy that must be followed according to contract language, we have other bodies to appeal to, in particular, in this case, the state. So, you know, just to reiterate what I said earlier, my hope is that, one, I'm going to reach out to board members because I want to share the perspective of faculty and I want to hear what you have to say, because I had a conversation with the dean last week where they invited me to their office because they wanted to clarify matter. And I shared our perspective, they shared their perspective, and then they said, oh, my goodness, I understand. I'm glad you came. And I said, I understand, so we're going to try to do this. And we were able to achieve what, what we said that we were going to achieve. Now, lastly, so i- in the spirit of contract language, I've learned recently that the administration is moving forward with implementing language from the class climate MOU that expired in June. We do not have a class climate MOU that we've agreed to yet. We have reached out to the district for, to agree to a class climate MOU. However, we have not received a response. So my question is, why have we not received a response to that request to bargain that class climate MOU? Thank you. That was my last question.
Thank you, Dr. Bowen. Ms. Ford, you are next. And I just would like to remind the board that Ms. Ford wrote earlier today to ask for additional minutes for her time.
Good evening again. First of all, I'd like to highlight our custodians. They are truly the group that works against the odds. They work all shifts. They're here twenty-four sev- twenty-four hours a day. So when I say that, by that I mean there are custodians, there're, um, squ- they have more square footage than there are custodians. We're not meeting industry standards yet by the number of custodians we have versus the square footage that they have to cover to clean. We need to streamline our hiring processes on the HR subgroup to expedite, expedite our hiring procedure so that we can hire more. All custodians, whether they work day, swing, or graveyard shift, are assigned routes and within those routes are duties that must be performed to meet the needs of the campus. And that includes, but are not limited to, restrooms, classrooms, common areas, the cafeteria, touchpoints, and so forth, all being cleaned. Day shift ensures that our campus is able to meet the daytime needs of the campus in the whole and keep it looking presentable. Swing shift and graveyard shifts are responsible for the deep cleaning that occurs across the campus. With assigned routes, there's no room for requesting extra duties. Therefore, the most prudent thing for everyone to do would be to turn in a trouble call when extra work is needed or you would like special attention for, for a certain area. This allows for the supervisors of those areas to work with custodians to accomplish those extras, or if additional need is hel- is needed, then that can be identified. Also, due to the shortages of custodial staff at this time, custodians have been directed not to clean offices, but instead to leave trashcans outside of offices so they can be emptied. Please, everyone, be mindful of the hard work our custodians perform. And if you need something extra for your area, contact the maintenance and operations department. I think they're our best workers because none of us are here at midnight with them. The next topic I want to discuss is progressive discipline. But before I begin, I'm going to ask you all to be open-minded and leave the perspective behind that the union's trying to tell the district what to do because that's not the case. And instead, consider it trying to move to a better place. I mean, think about it. What I'm about to tell you will probably have you fall out of your chairs. I sat in on your legal firm's training and that was a real page-turner for me. Mr. Buffalo, when you asked Dr. Bowen a few weeks ago to share with the board what the district does right from the union's perspective, it gave me pause to ask the question, that your question really accentu- accentuated the divide that I think you all are seeing. Your divi- your question caused me to consider why the disparity and inspired me to seek information to determine where the gap is. Now, I'm the kind of person, if I don't know, I'm not going to pretend I know, but I am going to go out and find the information for myself. Because I don't want to be one who sits in front of people, doesn't ask questions, and doesn't get all the information. I only get what's fed to me. I hesitantly participated, and I'm just being honest, I hesitantly participated in frisk training from the Adelson, Atkinson, Andelson, Loyah, Rudd, and Romo firm, which is the district's firm. I attended this with jaded eyes, thinking it's all about how to marginalize and get rid of employees based on the actions of the district and the board's decisions. Now, there were some perspectives throughout the training I didn't agree with. However, I have to be honest with you, I was surprised to learn about how, about frisk and their understanding of due processes under the law. But the shock for me was, it aligns with our collective bargaining agreement. And so I'm going to share with you some key factors that I picked up from the training. I didn't know this because I've never seen this. Employees should be assured at every level of the disciplinary process that the supervisor has their back and is interested in their success. Meetings with employees regarding issues should be held outside of the supervisor's office in a nu- in a neutral location. Employees should be made aware of the rule, that is, if there is a rule. Employees have the right to union representation, and even if the managers do not believe so, if the employee believes so, then they can have a rep. If the meeting becomes tense, the supervisor should allow for a break or what unions call a caucus to give everyone the opportunity to regroup and come back with a more positive frame of mind. All steps of due process should be followed. Verbal and formal should occur before ever reaching a written reprimand or worse, unless it's an extremely serious infraction. Rules should be applied across the campus and not department by department. These are just a few of the key factors that I picked up from that training. Factually, there will, and are times when errors are made by employees and maybe even some of your administrators. But if these principles are applied, employees will be helped to improve and will minimize the ongoing punitive actions of excessive paid administrative leave terminations and purb charges, if applied accurately. Those will happen from time to time, but they won't be the norm, which seems to be the case lately. When unions come before you as a board, we're seeking your guidance, that you encourage moving in a less punitive direction. When it comes to employee discipline, similar to other colleges in which our field rep shared with Dr. Helsper, he works with eleven to twelve other community college districts, and ours is the only one with the most punitive actions towards employees. Our hope is with proper training and proper practical application, this can be minimized. After all, why are we paying legal fees for this training if the training is not going to be applied? Thank you, Mr. Buffalo, for making me rethink what we are doing and learning that while we may be far apart in discipline, we can improve, and this is obvious by the fact that our collective bargaining agreement and the training from frisk lines up. Thank you for listening. Lastly, I just want to say that Arian Johnson was supposed to be here last night. He's our field, tonight. He's our field rep, but he wasn't able to attend this evening because he was hospitalized. His family's on the way, flying out from Georgia, and we're waiting to find out what the prognosis is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. We now have our confidential management report from Ashley Hawkins, and after that, we will hear from Renee Lynn Wilson.
Good evening. As we embark on another exciting fall semester, I'm pleased to share that the past three weeks have been incredibly productive. Our students are settling in on the en- and the energy on campus is palpable. The start of a new academic year always brings a sense of renewal, and we're well on our way to another successful semester. I would like to take this opportunity to extend special recognition to a few of our unsung heroes, Ron and Noe and their team of supervisors and classified staff over in facilities. Their tireless dedication to the daily operations of our college is indispensable. Without their hard work, many of our essential services would not be possible. Their contributions have been particularly critical, supporting the successful opening of SOAR High School in Palmdale and the launch of our non-destructive testing lab here in Lancaster. Their commitment ensures that our students, faculty, and staff have the resources and environments needed to thrive. On behalf of the entire CMSA community, thank you and your team. Additionally, as we approach the anniversary of September eleventh, I would like to remind everyone that the Veterans Resource Center will be hosting our annual Patriot Day ceremony at the administration flagpole this Wednesday, September eleventh at eight thirty AM. This solemn occasion provides us with a moment to come together as a community and remember and honor the lives lost on nine eleven. We encourage all staff, students, faculty, and board members to attend if possible. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Renee Lynn Wilson from the Associated Student Organization, and then we'll have Ms. Diane Knippel.
Oops, sorry. Good evening, Board of Trustees, President Zellot and student trustee. I would just like to report on ASO. We had our hydration promotion event, which was very successful. We had five hundred eleven bottles originally ordered and distributed evenly for both days that we were out in two separate, two separate places on campus, and we ran out of all of them on both days early. We also had, we held Club Brush last week behind SSV, which was also a success, except for a few criticisms about where it was held, which was valid because it was very hot. So to act on those criticisms, ASO has planned to purchase more canopies to have at, to have at events and maybe even donate to the college. We also had Kona Ice, shaved ice at Club Brush, which was also a huge success. Office hours for the people in the cabinet have started and are going towards their stipends. A new committee was made for trunk or treat, the event that was held last year. It is expected to be held around the same time this year. We are spreading the ASO sticker and its benefits to students while also promoting our emergency grant, so many students know what's accessible to them and how to get them. We also did change the requirements for our grants that we give out and that you must be an ASO sticker holder. This is held up with our emergency grants and the grants we give out to clubs. It also has come to my attention by a member of the public that student workers and students who have been pushed through by job placement are unable to have been or let go due to the client funds from the federal work study. I know, I know this was touched on in the meeting, but I do want to reiterate how closely this does affect students, even in ASO. There was also a lack of communication and promises of jobs that never happened. Current student workers are, current student workers are even worried about their jobs. This also affects student workers and student morale as it put, as it fuels doubt at AVC and their capability of providing for student workers. This also affects mental health and becomes even a stressor for students that already are part-time or full-time students. Thank you so much. That is all.
Thank you. Ms. Diane Knippel with the Antelope Valley College Foundation, and then we will hear from President Zellot.
Good evening, Board, President Bridget, and not ever to forget, our wonderful admin assistant. Great news. Students are getting their scholarship money. Yay. This year, it was the largest year that we have given scholarships at over two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So I want to thank financial aid in supporting us as we provide the information for them to distribute to students. We've had a actually, an actual rise in transfer students this year. I'm talking to my staff, Emily Milton, who's back here today. She says, wow, we've got thirty thousand dollars going out the door. Yay, that's what we're here for. So the other piece I'd like to announce too is this is grant season. ASO has grants and so does the foundation. So the annual wine walk profits contribute to what's called the Antelope Valley Students Community Endowment. And it's through that endowment that we offer the grant program to faculty. So we'll be opening that Monday on the sixteenth, closes the middle of October. And I'm working with several different organizations to get, raise more visibility so that we can get more applications to be able to support. Application's real easy, takes about an hour if you know what you're looking for, so it's not that hard to do. And then trustee Gaines, since you are a wine walk participant, Still Waters Catering has done all of our catering for the wine walks, and we've gotten huge reviews on great support from Still Waters. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Now, we'll hear from our superintendent president, followed by our board member comments.
Good evening, Board of Trustees and student trustee. We are in the fourth week of fall 2024, and our campus community has risen to many challenges, not the least of which are fraudulent enrollments, delayed financial aid due to, and I'm going to use my sarcastic finger quotes, improvements in the FAFSA process, and excessive heat affecting all from our campus workers to student athletes. But in the face of all of this, Antelope Valley College continues to innovate and work according to the principles of AVC serves. While we take time to celebrate the beginning of a new semester, this week in September for the past twenty-three years has been one of somber reflection. On nine eleven, I was living in Michigan, so this happened in real time for me. I was carpooling to work with NPR playing in the background. The breaking news caught my ears and mid-sentence of conversation, I stopped and said, how does a plane accidentally crash into a tower? That moment is crystallized in my mind, and I will always recall how the rest of the day played out on our campus. Support groups for faculty and students, counselors for employees and students alike, grief support for the many of our campus community who had direct connection to people involved in this tragedy. There were many lessons learned in the aftermath of this event, and many books and articles have been written extolling the positive and negative decisions and actions made in the moment. One article I read about lessons learned listed some key points that I find very applicable to us at Antelope Valley College as we work toward our mission and following the principles of service. One, the team is essential. No one responds to a crisis or any situation alone. All we have to do is look at any strand of our campus operations, and it is clear that teamwork is essential. The only way to ensure that students have equitable access to education is for everyone from operations to enrollment to support services to instruction and even to administration to work collaboratively, humbly acknowledging that no position on campus is superior or inferior to any other. We simply perform different tasks that are all required for student success. Two, communication matters. People need information always, but particularly in times of uncertainty. Think about the national crises that we have lived through, nine eleven, COVID. People turn in to learn because knowledge is power. All of us at AVC have the privilege to communicate and do so with fidelity. If we truly desire a functional, healthy, thriving campus, then our communications will be thoughtful and truthful, promoting the goals of community and student service and success. Three, it's critical to have a few well-understood guiding principles. Details are for the fleshed-out strategic plans, but when we're communicating with each other about the work of the college, having a few well-understood guiding principles aids in our focus and accomplishment of the work. We exist to offer the opportunity of education to this community. And while we're still a work in progress, the braiding together of our various plans into AVC serves and encapsulating everything we do in service, equity, resources, vision, education, and success helps us stay focused. Four, leadership matters. Leadership presents itself in many manifestations and of various constituent groups at AVC. Everyone formally recognized in a leadership role has prescribed duties that help those pieces fit into a whole. Each leader on campus must walk that tightrope of representing constituencies in the context of our purpose as an educational institution, as well as in the context of the campus community as a whole. Context tempers the extremism that can occur when leaders back into their constituent corner and hold that group's concerns as primary without regard to the greater community that makes their constituency possible. We acknowledge as absurd the notion of the heart scoffing at the lungs, holding prime its own beat, and downplaying the essential nature of oxygen. Or the stomach asking the brain, how would you like to think without any nutrients? While the brain cuts off the firing of neurons that stimulate digestion. Those examples are absurd because we recognize the symbiotic nature of the body and the critical interdependence required for life. Antelope Valley College is comparable in that no constituent group exists or functions for long without all of the others. Simply put, we need each other. As leaders, we can determine if we're surviving or thriving based on how we choose to lead. Antelope Valley College will honor the victims, heroes, and survivors of nine eleven this Wednesday morning at eight thirty in front of the administration building. Please join us as we never forget this tragic event or the important lessons learned, and let us honor them by taking those lessons into our everyday life. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Zellot. We're going to start with Anthony Rivera, student trustee.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to see everyone here. Now that we're in, back in week four, it's starting to pick back up on campus, starting to get back in the swing of things. I wanted to first echo the thoughts of the students that came to talk. I appreciate that it has piqued President Zellot's interest that we're having the meeting on Friday. I think it should be of the utmost importance to recognize what the student workers do here on this campus and make sure that their efforts do not go unnoticed. Secondly, I wanted to talk about the EDGNAV, and I reckon, I really appreciate the effort that's been made on that. I know this is a very, I mean, part of the college is just taking their classes, and if we can't choose our classes and get good advice from that, then it's, it's very difficult to proceed. And I, I really appreciate the efforts I put into that. I just wanted to note that if we do go forwards with degree works, that it wouldn't be operational until 2027. So I was just kind of wondering if, how we will proceed during that period of time where we don't have access to degree works. I don't think that it's in our best interest to just rely on EDGNAV as it is for the next three years. Other than that, I would also like to remember Other than that, I would also like to remember the date, nine eleven, a very important day in our history and the one that should always stay in our minds and hearts. Thank you.
Trustee Gaines?
I don't, I don't have anything this evening. Thank you.
Okay. Trustee Reeves?
I know it's getting late, and we've discussed, we mentioned nine eleven. I wanted to mention nine eleven to you in personal terms. I knew three people that were involved in nine eleven. One was a woman that was in one of the towers when the plane hit her tower, and she immediately got her purse and went down to the lobby and started walking across New York away from the towers. And I always thought, "You're the smartest woman in the world," and she was. Another man, he was a rugby player in San Francisco. He played for the San Francisco Fog, which are the meanest, toughest rugby team in the state. And I played them once with my team, and I don't know what happened, but I was the MVP of the match. Yay. Mark was on flight ninety-three going from Newark to San Francisco. He was on a business trip, and he called his mom from the plane and told her what was happening. I didn't meet Mark, but I've met his mom a couple times at international rugby tournaments, and of course, I hugged her and thanked her. The final person was the fire chief in Palmdale. I met him at one of the nine eleven ceremonies, and he told me that he had gone back to New York City, and he was involved in the recovery. There were no more live people to be found, it was a recovery mission. So these are real people that were affected by, and we're all affected by nine eleven. So therefore, I would invite the board and the audience to join me in a moment of silence
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reeves. Mr. Buffalo?
Yeah, I'll second that on Tina tonight, what was said. She is an incredible instructor, incredible person. And I'd like to say that the student jobs are incredibly important. I'm very supportive as a former student here who was a student worker. I get it, and I'm hoping that we can get that resolved. I'm sure we'll work very hard to get that done. I also want to say, the speaker that's coming up, Jose Hernandez, is a tremendous speaker, and everybody should see that, that can. If you're not familiar with the story, he came here as, as a farm worker with his family. He got inspired by a teacher, ended up getting a doctorate, two master's degrees, and did some amazing things with some inventions, and became an astronaut. It's a great story, and he was rejected by NASA three or four times. So it's a tremendous story that'll be invaluable to our students moving forward. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Buffalo. Mr. Adams?
I would also like to recommend Jose Hernandez on Friday. His movie is called A Million Miles Away, and actually, he was turned down by NASA twelve times before they finally accepted him. So we used to have a gentleman who would come in fairly infrequently, but we haven't seen him for a number of years, who used to complain about Antelope Valley College's aerospace programs and our airframe and power plant programs and said, "No Hispanic students would ever take these programs and would never profit by these programs." And I know that over the years, we've had hundreds of Hispanic students go through the programs and who now have very high-paying jobs in aerospace industries. So regardless of what was said earlier tonight, I think Mr. Hernandez is a, is an excellent role model and reflects a little bit of the college's ability to attract aerospace jobs for our students. That's all I have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Adams. I also support Mr. Hernandez. I think a different cultural icons walking different paths is something we all can learn from. So I am truly glad that he's here. I want to commend the student workers who came in. It's really important, as young people, that we learn to take our issues to proper forums and address things, and I was just really proud, I always am. I think it's really important to be heard. When you're young, you have something to contribute to the world as a whole. Two words that I heard tonight that I have not heard in the four years sitting on this board. I heard different groups of stakeholders here use words such as interdisciplinary meetings, collaboration. Sometimes growing pains are hard. It does not mean you are not growing. So I am really pleased with some of the growth that I am seeing here, and I want to remind us that our next meeting is October fifteenth, and we hope to see you all here. We hope to see you at the nine eleven ceremony, as well as Friday for Mr. Hernandez. Please have a good evening. Get home safely. Thank you.